So Ray's not here yet, why don't we do the minutes?
No.
Oh, here he is, come on, come on down.
You got something? Chicken manure seems to be a very popular fertilizer for that. Works for a while.
No.
You know, I put rabbit. That was rabbit.
You found anything?
See, you, well, I missed stuff that you found.
Not knowing about manure, you know, with the droppings and, uh, and. So that goes on the garden, and then I grow kale here, yeah. Take kale.
I think David just put that away.
Cause they're the only ones that leave it.
I eat kale.
Well, I had cucumbers behind those, but for some reason, I don't know what, they just all of a sudden turned yellow and died.
My cucumbers did not do well either, and I think that they got.
That happens, that happens a lot.
They, uh, I think they need constant water, the heat.
They have plenty of water.
And you know David, you only get cucumbers.
But Ray decided not to stay, is that?
I can pay $1.99 for a packet of seeds, throw them in, and I get.
Pick the right.
And these are pickling cucumbers, which I much prefer over the, uh.
Sizers.
Yeah.
The pickles, if you let them grow too long, they get so better.
Uh, there, there's a couple of them in the woods right now nearby that are from in.
We took some out of his fridge the other day.
Hello, Ray.
In one bite and let.
Because, um, that plan, Ray, so this, these should just be larger sizes of the same.
What, we got mail?
Yeah.
They're all the same though?
They're all the same.
Do you make a large side?
Bigger, better.
Over there? Large side, do you miss? Uh, I'd like the small.
All right, Ray, welcome back. Um, we'll, we'll do your, your, uh, your checklist, but if you want to tell us, uh, anything, please, just go ahead.
Um, well, you know, I think the narrative is still the same, the application is still the same, this is for two new units of senior housing, and, uh, I think, uh, I'm hoping that I've addressed all of the issues, the concern that you raised at, uh, the last meeting.
And, and that was the square footage, which now is shown as called hundred.
And a bunch of things that you raised on the site plan itself, so.
Okay.
And others.
All right, so, um, if it's, uh, okay with everybody, I'll just go through this checklist and we can get down to the business, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, um, so, uh, and David, you have the old one, so, so you can.
Yep, and I have also one that I've gone through.
Okay, so you can expedite.
Yes, I'm gonna.
Thanks. All right, uh, names and addresses?
Yes.
Yes. Um, uh, B, 1B, names and business addresses?
Yep, those are all.
Okay, um, two, uh, variants, not applicable?
Not applicable, uh, special exception, yes, for the, the shoreline, for the septic.
Uh, hold on, uh, special exception, yes, uh, for the shore?
The septic system within the shoreline.
Septic. Okay, uh, subdivision approval from the planning board?
Not applicable. Not applicable.
Uh, department and written review?
Basic fire and police, yes, and not applicable for the rest.
Okay. And proposed use and associated building areas to get used, yes.
And that's in the, the, the narrative.
Right, days and hours?
Yep.
Need for utility? Services like that, yeah. Uh, lot size, blah, blah, blah?
Um, that is actually on the plan, but it is, um, it's, it's, uh, zoning calculations on the plan.
So, is that yes?
Um, it's not in the narrative, but it's on the plan, so I, I would.
Okay, so I'll put yes on the plan.
Yep, and that. It's definitely information we have.
Other information, did we request any other information?
Nope.
Okay. So, not applicable. All right, uh, already to page two, this is a record reference to perimeter boundary.
Uh, there are some references for the, the boundaries that have been done, um, but I believe, I still haven't seen a, a survey for the complete boundary, so.
Yeah, I just got word today that that's, they've completed that, and they're forwarding on it, the survey in digital form, um, so I think the intent is to overlay that onto, uh, Jim Kennedy's, and we'll see if there are any discrepancies, but they haven't brought any to my attention so far.
Okay, so, uh, how do we want, we want to say yes, or conditional, or what?
Since it's common, just say, you're conditional, you know, it's, it's common.
Right, right, who's Harry Burgess?
Sorry, Harry?
Is this a survey, Harry Burgess, you said survey by Harry Burgess, that is an old word?
Uh, no, that's a new survey.
Oh, he did it, okay.
Yes, and he's completed all the field work and is, uh, I think completed the longest work.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know he done it.
Okay, tax maps and lot numbers?
Um, that doesn't, it doesn't have all of them within 200 feet, but I think that when you look at the, the shape of the lot, um, if you were to add those to the map, within 200 feet, you would have to zoom out so far that you wouldn't be able to see, uh, the, the, the actual site plan.
Okay.
Um, so I would, they weren't supplied for the, the noticing, so everything was noticed correctly in those, or just not on the plan. I would ask the board, or, or ask for you, but I, I think it should be, cause the board could waive, um, we do know them, and I just think it would be, uh.
I, I would suggest we say, we waive it on the basis that they're shown as practical.
Yeah.
Well, and, and you say they are on the application?
Yeah, they, they were the ones that we used for the notice.
Does anybody object to that waiver?
I just don't think showing them would give the board any other.
Right.
Or more information.
We have the information and what we need to see is shown. I understand correctly. Okay, the location map?
Um, that was part of the original submission, um.
I'm received.
So that, that's this one right here, so the answer is yes.
Okay, uh, north point graphic, blah, 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 yes. Uh, zoning districts?
Um, this is all within the line common zoning district, um, and I don't know if there was a note on the, I couldn't find one, um, but, you know, I don't know if the board wants a note, or, you know, we're.
What's the board?
The boundary's gonna be outside the, the coverage of the map.
I think it's pretty obvious, I mean.
So, uh, do we want to waive that?
I would waive this.
Anybody not want to waive it?
I would.
Okay, so I'm gonna waive it on the basis that it's all within the line common zoning district. Okay, the seal of any professional or firm?
Yep.
Town of line conservation districts is, blah, 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 blah?
Yes, the, the only one is the, uh, shoreline, which is shown.
So that's a yes?
That's a yes.
Uh, the location area and dimensions?
Yes.
Existing and proposed utilities?
Yes.
Freshwater supply?
Yep.
Sewage disposal?
Yes.
Electrical lines and equipment?
Yes.
Exterior lighting?
Yep.
Phone cable communication lines?
Uh, those are included in the, um, if you look on the, the legend, electric, telephoning cable, all coming in on the same set of holes, um, in the, uh.
So I'll just, I'll just say sh- shown on legend.
Well, shown on plan.
On the plan.
Shown on.
Yep.
Okay.
On the plan, on the plan, though, it actually says new overhead electric service, it doesn't mention any others, but in the legend it has.
Right, yes.
So I'll put shown on plan and legend. Okay, um, fuel storage distribution lines?
I don't believe there are any, you don't have any.
No fossil fuels?
No fossil fuels, I thought that was.
Uh, air conditioning?
Um, you do have the, the heat pump locations, so.
Say yes.
Yep.
Fire protection response plan?
Yep.
Rights of way and travel surface of all firms?
Yes.
Okay. Um, landscaping plan?
Yes, we have that from the last, and then there's also landscaping notes.
Okay, existing and proposed grades?
Yes.
Uh, existing and proposed method of handling water?
Absolutely.
Uh, direction of flow?
Yep.
Uh, location, elevation, blah, blah, blah?
Yes.
Uh, engineering calculation?
Uh, Jim had provided those in another document earlier on, so I have them in the file.
Okay, uh, already provided, uh, and earlier?
Yep.
Okay, uh, build out layout plans, 120?
Yep.
Um, shape, size, dimensions?
The only thing that I did not see is, um, you don't have elevations of the new building, um, but that's, um.
Doesn't it show slab elevations on there?
Elevations is, uh, sorry, the profiles of the.
Architectural.
Oh, um, I thought we sent you those the last time.
So, I, do we get those? I don't.
Yeah, I understand them.
I remember.
Then I, I'll have to check back through, but then.
Okay, then that leaves us a yes?
Okay, that's a yes.
Uh, showing conceptual plans and elevation?
Yep.
Uh, copies of each of the, of all required travel state local permits approvals?
Yes, the, uh, the only thing is the state driveway, which I have talked about.
State driveway?
Yep. No, that hasn't been.
Okay, what was that?
That has not been submitted yet, would remind me before you leave, give you this, I was sitting down at my desk and handling it up.
Okay, uh, additional information, I, I don't think we wanted additional information, did we? Did we?
Not that I know of.
Okay. All right, so that's, that was a land speed record, um, so I would like to make a motion that the.
Practice makes perfect.
Right, site plan review checklist, uh, is, that we consider it, approve it, uh, accept it as complete, is there a second? Okay, uh, all those in, oh, hold on, uh, oh, we, we can't replace that?
We can't replace, yep.
Okay, so it's just the four, four of us, okay, so all those in favor? All those opposed, none. All right, we're ready to get down to the site plan review. All right, Tim.
Ray, this is a question, um, I see Eversource is making you put in another poll, you didn't have any luck with them?
No, um, let's see, Alan Chamberlain, I think is his name, uh, from Eversource, is retiring, and, uh, the best, you probably will note that we moved the poll uh, from the last application where it was just outside of, uh, Lori, the Wadsworth bedroom window.
Right.
Uh, I'm still not happy with the current location as shown on your site plan, uh, but it's the best of that alternative. Uh, I don't know if the tree will survive, but I'm hoping we can, uh, we'll, we'll make every effort we can to make that happen. Um, they're completely, uh, inflexible, um, in their, they just said we will not put any facilities underground, period. So this guy's about to retire in a week, I thought I would pick up the pieces with his successor and see, and, you know, I, just, it doesn't make sense to me, but I'm, you know, we need to move forward, so.
Right, and then the transformer is there, and then it's underground from the transformer?
Yeah, so I, I, as I understand this, the overhead that's currently on the main building servicing units one and two would then go away, that would be moved down, we'd still have the meters on the building, the transformer would feed buildings one and two, and then it would go underground to the other units. Yeah, so we still have a, you know, a box on the ground, uh, but I think that's relatively easy to landscape around.
Yeah, it's too bad, Eversource is.
You know, I almost called you Ken, cause I know you're working on that with, uh, different people, and, uh, would love to, would love to have somebody say, no, you need to put them underground, and you have a customer who wants to put it underground, this is stupid.
Right. Yeah.
And, and I, it seems to me there are other companies and, and probably other instances where they do it underground. Bill Warner said they do it all the time in Hanover, they put them in concrete, there's no, no issues, um.
Yeah, it sounds like it's who you get, who you talk to, Eversource.
Well, it's also the company too, though, uh, I wasn't sure, it seems a little farfetched, but aren't we free to select our electric companies now?
But you can, you can select.
You can select?
Where you get your power, where you get the electricity from, but.
But the, not the line?
Eversource has to deliver it.
Yeah, I see.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so it's stuck, in other words.
Right, yeah.
And, yes, Vicki?
So, um, so you actually have two new poles, one on the common and one, um, in your front yard?
No. Uh, sorry, you said, do I have two poles?
Will there be two new poles, one on the common and one in your front yard?
They're going to upgrade the existing pole on the common.
Yep.
So that one feeds, uh, it'll feed our development and also feeds Northern Woodlands, and it also goes across to Brett Ryan's building. So, but there will be a new pole, it'll be bigger and better.
Okay, and is your pole in your front yard a new pole as well?
Yeah.
And so are Northern Woodlands and Brett Ryan also gonna get new poles?
No, their feeds will stay the same, but they will, they're, they're fed from across the road to the, on the common.
Right.
They have a direct overhead line.
To the buildings?
Yes, but ours is too far to do that, and, uh, so there's no other alternative but to set a pole.
Yeah, and I think it's such a disservice to have that transformer in that location, given the historic nature of our common and your building and all the pain we've taken to, uh, protect that form.
I agree, yeah, um, you know, I, we're not gonna need power for a while, so we have some latitude to wait and hope that something will develop, but, you know, it's just banging, banging your head against the wall trying to make any progress, so.
Yep, so.
How big is the transformer?
Um, it's probably half the size of this table and maybe about this height, and that sits on a concrete box, and so everything goes into the box and comes up to the transformer, and then goes out of the box, underground.
I'll just ask the question, I, I don't know how New Hampshire deals with it, but in other states I have seen where you're able to, um, basically bury that concrete box, and so that the, your above ground is only, you know, six or eight inches.
Yes, and, and I think that can happen too, this guy was not, you know, was adamant about not doing that as well, so.
I think the problem is, the more you dig in the root system, the more you cut trees on the tree, that tree not gonna stand a chance.
Well, there's a good chance of that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they're gonna have to trim it anyway, like, the whole top's gonna get mangled because the line's coming through.
Right.
And they're gonna have to trim it to set the pole.
Right, so, I, I think the tree's toast.
Yeah.
Ray, yeah, we're not too far along yet on the, the big, you know, the, I mean, burying all the power on the common, we haven't gotten too far with that. So that's a ways away.
Well, it sounded like that to hear the guy from Eversource talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, well, David, David will be kind of turning over somewhat to Bill Warner.
Yeah.
Bill and I haven't talked about it, but, you know, we gotta come up with probably two and a half million dollars, so, you know, that's one hurdle. So, David thinks he can do it, but who knows?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's stick to the site plan review.
Yeah.
So, uh, anybody have other questions?
The only, one thing I did note, going back through the notes, um, is Vicki had asked for a, a snow storage area on the, uh, eastern driveway here.
Yeah, and I think Jim put that down by the lower barn, and I think really it should be up closer to the, let's say, to the, to the walk, uh, there's a stone wall that sort of frames the entrance to the barn.
Yep.
And I think it should be right on that ramp as it goes down, Jim has that a little bit in the, in the wrong location, I think he put it in there with good intentions, but we haven't, uh, really had a chance to, to tweak this.
All right, so David, could you, uh, just note that in a minute?
Yep.
So you're saying it would be sort of under the, under the branches of that 36 inch table there?
Yeah, can I borrow your copy of that?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it would be, uh, let's just say, within the, trying to figure out the best way of describing it, uh, the left end or western corner of the parking for the barn, so to the west of that, I think would be a, a good spot for, uh, for pushing the snow. You know, you have to miss, miss the walkway, but then starts, the grade goes down there anyway.
Okay, anything else? Vicki?
Um, Ray did offer to screen the concrete pad, and so whatever you choose, I know that, you know, being just put in a big propane tank on Market Street, and it makes a huge difference, even having like a cheesy lattice, I would s- suggest that that's the appropriate screen for here, but perhaps something would be nice.
Yeah, I think, uh, probably some plantings as opposed to screening or lattice.
Yep.
What, are you asking this thing?
This transformer.
Oh, the transformer.
Okay, and keep going if there's any other, anything else?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions, so Ray, first off, this is really nice, this is what line needs, so thank you.
Thank you, Richard, you've supported it all along and appreciate it, thank you.
The, uh, so I just want to be clear as, since this is kind of an unusual development, I just want to be clear what, what's here, so you've got one building that you're doing a conversion, and I think the board's already given you permission for that.
Two, two buildings that are converted.
Two buildings, okay, that's the, that's the main building, units one, two, and then the, um, the garage?
Yeah, the barn, yes.
The barn, okay, um, and, and then the senior housing is these two units, three and four, that, um, that have the, uh, the, the garage, both the, the four parking spaces there.
Correct.
And so, those are senior housing, uh, and you can have senior housing, I mean, I'm kind of looking at the board saying you have, does all comport with what, what the ordinance allows?
Well, yeah, you're part, you're part of the board too, do you think, don't, you don't think it does?
Right, you know, well, let me just ask first, but you don't think it does?
It, it's, um, you know, there's a lot of developments here with many different rules for allowing it to go forward, um, I think it's, I think it's something that we should allow.
But I'm asking you specifically if you have a specific objection.
So there can be two conversions on a parcel?
There's.
The conversion, the conversion rule, uh, says you can convert two, or you can convert existing buildings, so it, it talks about buildings, not specifically lots.
Richard, I'm not sure if this is, uh, to your point or not, but Vicki made the comment, uh, in her inimitable style last meeting that, uh, she was disappointed that this was all you got for senior housing, for this lot in town, a lot of effort on everybody's part to produce the senior housing ordinance, and honestly, this was the best we could do, I think, uh, ultimately I may come back for two more senior housing units, we'll see how this, the first two buildings, or two, two units go, but I'm sort of disappointed too, I think here we have the constraint of, um, the wetland setback, and I think if I build the next two units, I'll be maxed out in terms of nitrate loading on the site, so, uh, so I'm not, at this application, I'm not planning to build the next two units, but they are still dotted in there.
Well, if, if I can just jump in, I, I don't think that was the, the issue, I do, and you tell me if I'm wrong, but you were asking whether, whether this was technically okay. You know, you, the, the, that's not a criticism of what you're doing, frankly, we're getting five senior housing units we didn't have before, and I think that's great. The issue I think you were raising was whether this is allowable, and David, uh, addressed that, does that satisfy you?
That satisfies me.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Yep, and like I said, the conversion, it does speak of just, that you can convert buildings, it does not limit, it's not say you can convert a building on a lot, it says that buildings on a lot may be converted, and, and there are limitations to each building, and there's there are limitations, you have to have, you know, heat utilities, all that, um, for at least five years before you do that conversion, and, you know, both buildings qualify for that, so, you know, there are a lot of places in town that have a lot of buildings that do not have all of that in it, and so those would not qualify for conversions.
Unless you want to wait five years.
Right, put it in and wait five years.
We also are getting a, a sort of an experiment here, in that we've got three units that are going to be, um, that they're not under the senior housing, um, ordinance, but I'm understanding you're planning to market and use them as senior housing, so they'll be larger, and we'll see what the market for that is, cause that'll be different than if they were all within the constraints of the senior housing.
Yeah, very definitely, and I have people who express an interest in it, but, you know, I've also had a lot of people express an interest and they've gone away, so, and I really don't have a sense of the pricing yet, so, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit, uh, what, uh, pig in a poke at this, at this time.
Well, or it's, it's, uh, it's senior housing prime or something like that. Because it's, it's larger than you would ordinarily get.
Yeah.
You'll get something different, so.
And what would be interesting is if you are able to get it filled with all senior, and that will give the board a idea that maybe larger, uh, buildings are.
Well, I, I think, if, I mean, I recall the discussion about that, and the discussion was with a lot of input, it wasn't a question whether we thought bigger would, would sell or not, I, but actually, I think we, we all thought it would, the issue that was driven home to us repeatedly was to keep, um, keep them at an average size that would at least add, potentially add to their affordability, the way the ordinance is set up provides an incredible amount of flexibility, um, so that you can come up with something like this.
Right, and it's, it's average, yeah.
Are there other questions?
So the reason, the reason we're doing senior housing on units three and four, do, do we need to, to get those built, or do you want to do that?
Yes.
For the future?
Uh, say that again, Eric, I'm sorry, it's, it's hard to hear through.
Sorry, you, we need the senior housing to get three and four built, is that correct? I'm, I'm.
Yes.
Excuse me on that.
Yes, yes. Because, uh, you already have a primary through some of the lot, and adding another, other building, the only way to add that extra building is through the senior housing.
Okay, whereas before, if it was attached, it was tore off.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I was curious about the 1200 square feet, going back to the numbers there, um, I went through, um, and did the calculation myself, anytime I see 1200 in the nose, I, I, I start to worry, right? Um, and what I got, actually, was, the first time I did it, was I, I was able to reproduce exactly the 1242 from before. And what I got actually was, the first time I did it was I, I was able to reproduce exactly the 1,242 from before.
Yep.
But that included all of the garage space, sorry, all of the garage storage space.
I don't think those are considered part of living space.
Okay, no, that means storage office and garage, they're not?
It's not considered a living space.
Well, let's, let's read it.
Let's be sure. And the 1,200.
So what are we talking, are you talking about what's in the garage?
Well, there's areas for cars in the garage. And we're not, that's, those aren't counted because it pre-does a square foot.
Right.
So we're just talking about the beauty, right?
Right, and in the garage and floor plans, there's two, there's storage washers. Are those counted for?
I think, I don't think.
I think they're not, unenclosed porches and spaces less than five feet.
We have a definition.
You do have a definition, and I can't pull it up, but is it five?
Gross floor area for senior housing.
Yeah.
Some of the floor area of each senior housing unit. Floors are measured from the interior limits of the structure, at least five feet in height and floor ceiling. Floor area of the senior housing unit includes floor areas within each unit only used for living space.
Right.
It includes closets and stairwells and enclosed porches within a unit, but does not include common areas. So does that include or exclude storage units?
Storage areas in the garage?
In the garage?
No, not, not, not mine. Well, you have to.
Well, let's ask, let's ask David, right?
I personally would not include them. I would consider those more a common area. You know, it's accessible to everyone. It's not a part of your private unit.
Well, and also within, with the definition, it's repeated over and over within, and that is not within.
Then the elevator would be a stairwell, deserves to be.
Yeah, also not part of living space.
Yep.
Not, not part of living space.
Now, if the stairway were part of a two-floor unit, then the stairway would be a part of your living space.
Right, but because it's common area to get from one, from the garage to the first to the second.
Correct.
I would not include it as part of the living space.
So anyway, when I did this calculation, what I got was 1,100 square feet, not 1,200 square feet.
Well, that's interesting.
And I had a couple of questions, which, a couple of things that didn't quite.
I didn't do the calculation that my CAD guy, Marcus Head, did. And he draws, you know, rectangular spaces with this CAD and it punches out the numbers.
It spits out the numbers, yeah. I had to do it all fucking out. So anyway, on your, and units four and three are parts of the same, right?
They are, yeah.
So it didn't, I couldn't find any dimensions for this, this closet here on the interior of the units, right?
Can I see that? Because unfortunately, I don't have that.
I didn't see any dimensions.
Are you talking about the utility closet?
No, when you enter the unit, there's a closet right there.
Yes.
It doesn't have these dimensions. When you enter the unit.
Oh, into the unit.
And then there's a closet.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think you're right, Eric. I think you have to sort of extract it from the perimeter square footage.
And then when I look at the dimensions, and I'll, 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 I'll look at the dimensions for these two, hallway, the entry hall. My guess was that this was counted like this, and that this one was counted like this.
Well, you just counted those twice.
So this was double counted?
Oh.
Anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that. I can't, I can't tell you. That's his, his calculation.
So can we, can we ask that calculations be confirmed?
He did confirm them. So I did have a better questioning Eric's calculation, not mine.
Which is fine.
Well, he, you know, you will, the prior one was 1,242.
Right.
And I think you can visually see how there are 42 square feet deducted from that and made common space.
So how did, how did we lose the 42 square feet? I didn't have the layout for this.
Oh, let me show you.
Okay.
It was your suggestion, actually.
Yes, I, I thank you.
So, so this, this wall here originally was here. And this space was all interior space. So captured that plus that as common space.
Okay.
So it's at least 42 square feet.
I'm going to go by Mark Head, yeah. I don't know where the 1,100, I'm worried you have to pay 1,100 square.
Is that true, Dave? I mean, it certainly would be space that you might want to have. If you're, if you're under, you can get it back somehow. So it's really up to you to look. It doesn't have anything, any effect on our decision.
Well, I mean, our decision can clarify that we're approving up to 1,200.
1,200.
Yes, per unit.
Well, but as someone who's done a lot of data work and a lot of data analysis in the past, when I see the 1,200 show up on the plan here, and when I see someone nail a threshold exactly, I start to worry a little bit.
Well, those were his instructions. You know, we could have pulled that entryway back in far.
Right.
And I said, no, make it 1,200.
Make it 1,200.
We could want every inch of it.
Yeah, it sounds like he figured, he figured it out, where he's going to put that wall to make it exactly 1,200.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you put a condition on it, that it says I have to prove that it's 1,200 square feet.
I think, I think that's, that'd be fine, that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, when I did the calculation, I got less, so.
So it doesn't sound like that's going to be much of a problem.
I just wanted to figure out what the discrepancy was.
I guess I can't explain it.
So we'll just emphasize that, that the board is approving the two units to average out no more than 1,200 square feet.
So are we saying that that's a condition?
That's what I'm suggesting. Does anybody object to that?
Hopefully, obviously, because that's part of it.
Well, thank you for doing all that work. That's, that's, that's great. All right, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I would notice that on the right-hand side, you have lot 20129, Flickinger Holding Group LLC, and it's actually Conant House LLC.
Okay.
So we can just get that changed here.
Sure. I'm surprised that didn't come up. I show it here, it's Northern Quiddlin.
Next one down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you go south of that.
Flickinger Group.
Yep.
Okay.
P O Box 167, Lime Center. He has a lot of properties that go to that email, or that mail. All the ones he sends letters to all the time, so.
And it's Conant House?
Yeah, Conant House LLC.
Okay, so any other statements, questions, commentary, soliloquies, monologues? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion.
Before you do, would you like to?
I almost got it.
Almost, I would like to ask the public if they have any comments.
Thank you very much. Usually, usually someone here is busy. Do you have any comments?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
No?
No.
All right, well.
Is there anybody on the phone listening?
Nope, there's nobody on the phone, so, other than us. But the select board has asked that we provide the Zoom access by phone, so.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review with the conditions listed. What are the conditions?
I read my own handwriting. You want to move the snow storage area to the north to fit that. You want screening around the transformer and changing the Conant House. Those are the three that I had.
And the 1,200?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 1,200 square feet, yes.
Okay, so those are the conditions. Is there a second? I, oh, Vicki just beat you to it. You were close. She got the buzzer first. So, all right, there's a second. All those with favor, four people voting. And all those opposed, none. Ray, congratulations and thank you. This is terrific for the family.
Let me just say thank you to all of you for your patience. And I think you've shown a lot of due diligence in getting the first two senior housing units in line to this point. And I appreciate your patience, and I know there will be more for all of us. I had somebody pull into my yard today, and I don't know why, but this is happening all the time this summer. A nice couple from southern New Hampshire looking for land or a house to move up. Quite older, a older couple downsizing. So we chatted, I gave them my email, et cetera, and.
They pulled into the red truck.
Am I going to deal for you?
It's not the market that I'm hoping to fill these units with, or the demographic. The demographic is right. Let's see, I'm hoping to find line books, so. Thank you all for your patience.
Well, thank you for your, for your sticking with it.
Yep.
It's painful, but it's, it seems to work. Vicki, what are you, what are you wearing on your arm there? What is it?
This is a bony tattoo that says bride tribe. And I attended a wedding because I'm at an age where my friends are getting remarried. And I'm part of the, I was part of the bride tribe.
Good for you.
Yeah.
It's not permanent.
No, it's not. It's been there for two weeks, so I'm waiting for it to.
She doesn't, she didn't think it was permanent.
Yeah.
I'm off to celebrate a birthday, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have Pinnacle. So everybody, I think everybody got this message. And I would, I would like to suggest that we approve the waiver on the basis of the unforeseen impact of the COVID-related disruptions, as Phil put it. I don't see any benefit in us reopening this issue.
And one thing I will state is that when, submitted to me, that was one of my issues. I saw that there was a 60-day time limit, we're a little bit 20 months late. But I talked to Laura from the municipal group, which represents the town, and it was her suggestion to do this letter and ask the planning board to waive it. So that came from town council, not just from Phil. So it was, it was not, it's not just Phil saying, hey, I feel you should do this. It was town council's recommendation.
But I think the point is, there are two points I would like to make. That it should never be this late, you know, that's ridiculous. However, given that we were in unusual circumstances and that there's just, the town just has no interest in doing this, I would suggest that we.
Hey, John, I'd like to make a point of order. I am formally recusing myself.
Well, you're, you're, you're already, yeah, you're recused.
Right, so.
Yeah, Vicki?
So Phil stated that there would be significant and unnecessary hardship to the applicant. I was wondering what that was.
I could speak to that.
I hope you will.
Okay, so if, if in fact we had to come back and rehear this with full notice and full application even, it would take a month, two months to get the whole thing done. And that would be, that would severely impact our ability to move forward with the project.
And this was approved on September 5, 19?
Yes.
Okay. Just wondering, because there were no specifics given, and it was a nice phrase or two to throw around, so I was wondering what specifically you meant.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Well, you know, that's what's presented.
The problem, the problem with it is there's simply no way it should have been this late. And the board should not be in the habit of giving waivers out on this. But I think in this particular instance, given that COVID existed, although it was probably after those two months, I just don't see that it's in anybody's interest to do this.
Well, so there's been nothing in the zoning or the subdivision regulations that have changed, that would change the outcome.
And I don't imagine that if we went through the whole thing, that we would come to a different.
I think it would be an issue that the board would just be spending their own time.
That's right. I mean, it's not, it's not only, you know, the applicant, but the board would be spending an inordinate amount of time on something that's already been done and is a foregone conclusion. Again, I'd like to reiterate that it's ridiculous that it took this long, but it did. And if anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I honestly didn't even put it together that it had been 20 months. When it said 60 days, I was trying to do the math from 90 days, not 20 months. So it didn't even go off my radar, those 20 months.
Yeah, this was for the condominium. Not the, not the septic, but the condominium. I'll try, you were probably wrong. I was here for the condo.
This is the condo. This is the condo.
Maybe I was here for the donor. Anyway, doesn't matter. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so does anybody have a pro, I mean, let's not, let me not phrase it that way. Are people, does anybody, is anybody against providing the waiver? Who, oh, yeah, it's still just us four, who can vote? Or, you know, David, if you, or, you know, you're, David, if you have comments also. Okay, so are we okay with the waiver? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve a waiver from section 315 of the Lime subdivision regulations, to the extent applicable, to permit the filing of a Mylar of an approved condominium plan more than 60 days after the approval date because of the unforeseen impact of COVID-related disruptions. And I would also add, because we don't, the board does not foresee opening the process again leading to a different outcome.
So then, does that mean that the 60 days starts again? Where did that start?
I have it right here, ready for John to sign tonight.
And then it starts another 60 days?
Oh, no, the 60 days, you're waiving the 60 days, saying the.
Allowing it to be like.
Allow, the 60, after the 60 days, the planning board's decision is void.
Automatically, right.
Right, and so by waiving that, you're not voiding out your original decision. And that you can allow John to sign it tonight.
Right, because anybody said, okay, got it.
Okay, so. Okay, so that was, did we get a second and a vote? We got a second from Eric, and all those in favor? All those opposed, none. All right, so that takes care of that. Unfortunately, I'm going to be leaving now for 60 days, and that will.
Oh, you, it doesn't matter because you waived that timeframe, so.
I'm not leaving for 60 days. All right, you can come back to.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Rich, I'm gonna have John sign this, and then I'm out tomorrow, but I am going to run this through the scanner with the sign, this signed through my scanner, make a couple copies of it, and then you can bring it up and have it recorded.
I could do that.
Yes, okay, so if you want to come see me Monday or Tuesday, we'll have it all set to.
Like to whistle, right?
Yes.
All right, so we want to go on to the minutes? And I have a couple, actually a few things I want to, a question and a couple of changes. On page two, the society of the protection of New Hampshire stuff.
Yes.
Did you get a reply from them?
I have not gotten a reply from them yet. The letter just went out because it's not just a letter that goes out to them, you know, I have to explain to them what was going on, I had to create a couple of maps to show them where their property.
Okay, so it's in process?
It's in process. It's not, you know, it took me a while to get all that.
Okay.
But it is in process.
On page three, third line up, Rich had not his issues, Rich had not raised his issues.
I didn't accept that as a question.
And tell me when you're ready.
I'm looking for that.
Oh, third line up on page three?
Third line.
From the bottom? Rich had not his issues. And on page four, at the bottom of the first paragraph of item three, I would just add the board agreed to explore this approach because it's not necess, I don't think the board, you know, agreed that that would necessarily, that that would end up being the, that's all I got.
You're editing your own words, John.
Well, somebody's got to do that. So. We can go on to.
Do you want to go a vote?
Oh, yes, 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 those formalities. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by John. Do I have a second? Vicky? Vicky, sorry, sorry, Vicky. All is in favor? All is opposed? Actually, you were, were you, were you, no, that was Ben, also. Okay, never mind. Okay, so that passes. On here, we have, okay, the site plan review amendments and timing for public hearing. You are gonna bring in that stuff.
Just wanted to pass it down. This is, I pulled from the minutes, from all the previous meetings, all the comments that were made, and what things you wanted to discuss, and. The 325 meeting did lead to the 48 meeting, and those, the 48, or, you know, it says item four, that seemed to be what was the final outcome, but I just wanted to bring up again everything that people had brought up, just to.
Thank you.
Refresh memories.
Okay, I think I have some notes on this as well. So. Three, two, so. I have notes here that with a question mark, so I guess somebody raised this, should, should, under three, two, the scope, should it be, should senior housing be added to the scope? Site plan review. Yeah, that's the scope. So apparently we discussed whether it would be a good idea to add it to the purpose of scope since it just makes it clearer. Any thoughts on that?
Seems like it's a multi-dwelling situation.
So we don't need a distinction?
I believe that was what the last.
I think that's where the conversation began.
Okay, so we don't need that, and 415, should we add, add it to four, put in the 415, types of the development requiring site plan review?
I think it's a multi-dwelling thing, I, so.
Okay, well, last time I recall that there seemed to be.
I mean, it just, so.
The board concluded they should add new entry to section four as well, 4.1.5. Senior housing is defined in Article 13 of the zoning ordinance.
That's what I recall, but we can change our minds?
And that's what I had in the minutes, so.
It sounds, what is the board's pleasure? Are we going to treat senior housing in terms of site plan review strictly as multi-dwelling? Which is, it is.
Well, I feel like if we. Senior housing includes non-senior housing as long as there's, you know, then we would want to get into the mixed situation, but I guess that's fine if you can have them both.
I'm gonna add, adding 415, what's the cost?
Well, just a matter of, does that mean it has to be purely senior housing? I want to make sure that then senior housing includes non-senior residential use upon the same water in the same building.
Well, senior housing is defined by Article 13 of the zoning ordinance, so it would be, I think I would consider it, everything is defined in Article 13, so if you had a multi-use including senior housing, that because it's defined there, then that would be how you would go about with the site plan, and it would be allowed.
You said, I did all of it, that includes senior housing in the article? Well, I mean, to Vicky's point, are we just making trouble for ourselves? Because it is.
I just see it's just a form of multi-family housing.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what's my argument about the co-housing, and it's just like, that just don't be multi-housing, why does it have to be co-housing, you know, that it is a multiple unit thing. So, you know, rather than splitting all these hairs, it kind of doesn't matter, the organizational.
You're saying, yeah, the organizational.
Or the age, you know, just as simple as.
Yeah, the difference, the difference here is that senior housing is a statutory thing and type of ownership is. But I mean, it may be a better just to leave it.
And the statute gives us the authority to do multi-dwelling and non-residential, so I would just give you that.
All right, so we, and then what else do we have? So that's everything? So we want to leave it? Is that the? Well, that's.
What do I do about parking?
Just leave it, because everyone's older dependent around here.
Well, the parking, what I had is that.
Vicky, did you get that thing I sent from Noah Richard about parking? A while ago, when I was like, look like David. Noah Richard, he's doing a lot of stuff with Fairly, and we're chatting.
Is this pertinent?
Well, it is in a way, but let's forget it.
Let's stick to. All right, so final time, people want to leave it? Okay.
Okay, that's easy.
Okay, so how about we, it's eight o'clock, we can get on to working on the zoning amendments. David provided these definitions. I had suggested that we break things down into the existing approach, which was, which is treating solar, accessory use solar as a structure. And we could consider adding, for things like lot coverage, we could, we could add special exceptions, which would make it expansive. In other words, if somebody has used up all their lot coverage, they could go to the zoning board to ask for a special exception. I think if that's the case, that there should be some constraints on it. Number one, that, you know, the, there can't be like unlimited over, over the lot, the lot coverage allotment, and there are, under the special exception, where is this, is it 12?
What are you, what exception are you looking for?
The special exception.
Eight twenty?
Eight twenty. Yeah, so within the special exception. Eight twenty?
Eight twenties, the.
That's not performed?
Oh, I'm sorry, well, eight forty is, or eight twenties is used specifically for the special exceptions when you are looking for extra space, I guess is the.
Okay, but I'm talking about the actual.
Ten forty.
Ten forty.
That is the 14 criteria for.
Yeah, so, so if we were going to provide the ability to go over lot coverage, I think it's important at that point that maybe one or more of these standards be, all of these standards would still be required, but we could even emphasize one or two or whatever, depending upon what we call.
So, John, could I ask a point of order here? Are we talking about solar energy and solar installations?
Yeah, accessories.
Yes. I'm not quite sure what to say here. Continue the point of order. I had sent a note to you and to David with some thoughts about solar energy, and.
Yes.
David informed me that that was not going to come up at this meeting, the discussion of solar energy was not going to come up.
I don't think that David said that wasn't going to come up.
That it was not on the agenda. There's always, the continued business if there's time, and without knowing, I can't predict what, how much time something's going to take. And I don't think that, you know, what you're sent is not, you know, cannot be, it can be part of the discussion, is not really resolved tonight.
I see, I see. So I guess I want to say that Dan O'Hara came to this meeting, because I had sent a note out to my, my readers on my list.
Yeah.
And said, this is going to come up, and then as a result of my discussions with David, I said, oops, so I ate some pro with my folks.
Right.
And at least one member of the public came out, didn't, and has gone home, because I actually suggested it wasn't going to come up tonight.
Okay. Well, I guess the best thing for you to do then, I guess there's a misunderstanding between you and David.
Well, I did ask that.
Let me finish.
But I'm sorry.
But I would, I would suggest to you that when you're going to do something like this, talk to David. And that way there'll be no misunderstanding. So I guess the misunderstanding was that you were presenting it that we were definitely going to talk about it tonight.
I actually fully expected that we would.
Okay, well, I thought that there was a chance we would, but I think David's point is very important, which is there was also a very good chance we wouldn't get to it.
I mean, I wondered about, I did wonder once I saw the.
Yeah.
I wondered about.
Exactly. So I would strongly advise that you think about what you're sending out, and particularly that you consult with David before doing something like this, because I got an email from Jim Nurse, who was very confused because of what you sent, and.
And what did you tell him?
I told him that we have a site plan review and we hope to get to it.
Okay.
Okay.
So. May I also ask, I think, is that a copy of my note?
This is a copy.
That's the one that I sent to you and David?
Yeah.
What's a good forum for me to send these?
I think if, you know, if we're discussing this now, I don't, I don't have, I mean, unless the board objects, I don't have a problem with this being distributed to the board, unless the board is not interested. This is, this is something that Rich recently sent to me and David.
May I characterize it?
No, I'm speaking. You can characterize it afterwards. That is on his blog and is entitled, Hopes for Solar Energy Installations. That was sent out to a number of people. So it's fine with me if we discuss it and everybody has a copy.
So I have a question about, so on the agenda, continued business would be solar?
Continued business is solar, I mean, tonight.
I guess I didn't, because I didn't bring any of my solar stuff, because I didn't think.
Well, what I said, what I said last time was I asked people to be prepared to, if we had time, to discuss solar.
Not knowing that, how much time is going to be left, it's hard to.
Frankly, frankly, I thought that Ray's thing would take much longer, so I'm pleased that we have the time, but let's not waste.
Well, just as a suggestion, maybe, I mean, not a criticism, but if there's in the future, if we say continued business, maybe we should just say what it would be, you know, just to make it clear.
But the problem being that I don't know, you know, how long something's going to take, so it may.
We need to say if time allows, and then just say what it is.
Yeah, you know, and then, yeah, just.
Because I didn't know we were going to talk about.
Well, I did mention it pretty emphatically. I don't want to waste more time on this. Does the, do the people on the board want to see Rich's thing?
So I'd like, I would like to characterize it.
Go ahead.
I have some aspirations of what I might like to see in solar energy. I also have a bunch of facts. I spoke to, I did some research on the model zoning ordinance, and I also spoke to Kim Cork, whom you know from Revision Energy, to say, what's a, what's a typical solar installation map? Because I certainly didn't know whether we were talking something the size of this table, or something the size of this building, or what, and so there's some information there that I think is useful for the discussion of exactly what John's saying. It's like, what about lot coverage? What about, is this a structure? What if somebody's right up at the limit, somebody's over, and I think these are helpful.
All right, so.
I would like, I would like to have.
So, is, would, pardon, I think, I would say, what was that?
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I think some of the stuff in here is helpful and other things not so helpful.
I will go make copies, then be right back.
But, yeah, so we'll all, we'll all meet here later. So in terms of what we talked about last time, we're going. we're going to do a two-track approach.
Makes sense.
Which I think makes sense. Because, because...
Because they're really different, I mean, the commercial thing, it's a different thing.
Yeah, but two different uses of solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so to be, just to be clear, residential versus...
I don't know, I don't know that it would be strictly residential. I think something I'd have to ask David, because I think you can have accessory uses that aren't residential.
Oh, I see what you mean. So, I mean, if you've got a...
A business.
A little business, and you have an array, it's clearly not residential, but it's not commercial generating profit making.
It's an accessory use to your, to your principal use.
So accessory versus commercial, is this sort of the words that we're talking about? Is that a fair way to characterize it?
I would, I would use the actual word, accessory use to a principal use versus...
Commercial.
Mm-hmm. So what if you had three...
But again, this is in process, so...
No, I'm just trying to understand the two tracks, and they make sense to me, they make, they make sense.
Those are the two tracks.
Yeah.
So if you, let's say you had three households, you know, three houses that were fairly close each other, and they wanted to go in on it together, just those three, that would be commercial?
No, because they're not, well, I mean, we'll have to address that.
Right, okay.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that as commercial, because...
But then you had six houses, that's, you know, I didn't know.
I think for them, we need to talk, probably start with Jim Nurse, because I don't think he can answer that as the, the framework for the utilities to do that. Am I right?
I think they're getting to it, I think there was just something, I mean, we do need to talk to him for clarity, but I think there was just, there was just enabling language passed that...
I think it's, I think it's a great idea if we should be prepared to talk about it at some point, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, we're blurring the lines there between, in some sense.
Well, okay, then let me take it, approach it a different way. Forgetting the specifics in general, my view would be, unless, and anything I'm saying is provisional, because I don't know whether somebody's gonna point out something which would completely change my, my mind. But just simply put, I would say that any energy usage that's related to the principal use of its own consumption, I would see that as being non-commercial.
Right, that, I, I accept that, I mean, that, that makes sense.
I'm glad you accept it.
So you had over like fifteen houses?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying, when, when you start to talk about the specifics, I can certainly change my mind.
If you're, if, those fifteen houses are the only beneficiaries of that. It's an accessory use to those fifteen houses, it's not commercial. They're not selling their power to someone else.
Oh, I'm just thinking maybe the side, you know, the side...
Yeah, I think, I think that's gonna be the challenge.
Well, if you have a net metering situation, which I'm not familiar with the ancient rules entirely, but even one home that's net metering, if the net, if it's a net sale to the grid, you could say that that's commercial.
It's not, you don't get any, it's not, it's just accredited to you, you don't get money back.
What's the difference?
You get credited until you, you have like two feet of snow on your panels in the winter, and you start digging into your products. That's how, that's how it works.
So, the way, the way the co-op runs their net metering is every, every, every kilowatt hour produced, you sell to the grid, that you don't use immediately. You sell to the grid, and then you buy back, and it's all, all the accounting is done in dollars.
So what if you generate...
There's no bank of power, they're just saving, you're selling and buying in real time?
So if you generate more than you use, say in a year period or two, then you got, you actually have cash ahead?
The balance on my account right now is minus three hundred and eighty dollars, and I do not know if I can ever cash that out.
Okay.
But I for sure am selling power to the grid.
But one of the arguments that you hear from a policy standpoint is that by allowing net metering, the proponents of net metering say, this is a way to generate surplus electricity and allow the person who does it to, to, to benefit financially. And...
My, my, I don't know, whoever sources who I have?
Yeah, but...
They, they, every month, they give me a carry forward. And they say, you've got this many kilowatt hours.
We're talking about one situation in one utility. I'm talking about somebody who was on the Utilities and Energy Committee in Maine, and we spent a lot of time talking about net metering. I mean, hours and hours, and a policy measure?
Yep.
And, and there are very large number of flavors of net metering. So if you're gonna design an ordinance, you can't design it for the one situation that we have today, you have to design it for what could come a few years from now.
So what do you, what do you, what do you suggest?
But I think, I think...
I'm just saying that, that trying to define commercial narrowly is very difficult. It's a, it's a big, I'm saying, it's a bit rare.
Yeah, I, I do more comfortable with the distinction being accessory use versus primary use. Because there's, there's potentially an argument that I'm a commercial producer, right?
Right, that was my point.
That's why I think accessory use is...
Right, but earlier you talked about accessory use and commercial use. I think perhaps a better way, the accessory versus the primary use.
Right, and if you define it that way, the accessory use was...
The solar farm is a primary use on a lot.
Right.
Potentially we could have an accessory use that's also commercial.
So, wait a second, so just explain that a little more, give me an example.
Potentially we could, we could have an accessory use that's also commercial.
An example of it?
Could be, could be, could be my house, right? I'm, I'm selling.
So then, then, just walk me through the logic. So then by using what you're saying, how would we avoid that?
Because we're, we're trying to make the distinction in terms of, because our ordinance between the accessory use and, right, which is, we all have, we get net metering, that's an accessory use to my property, right, to the primary use of your house. And versus a situation where the primary use on the lot is a commercial solar farm.
Right. Right, so that's a...
The distinction in my eyes would be that it's, that the solar farm is the primary use, not that it's commercial.
So would it make sense, would it make sense at all to, to use the size of the field as some sort of gain? In other words, if you're just using it for one house, it's gonna be a lot smaller?
That's gonna change. What I would suggest is if the net amount of sales is more than, say, double what your house consumes, then it becomes commercial.
Who's gonna enforce that?
I, I don't know, what I'm just, all you're saying is that we're trying, we're trying to decide that if I wanted to have my house and I had room for one of those tractor things, right, and I'm just gonna sell a little bit of surplus, ten percent more than I actually use, or twenty percent or thirty percent, that's accessory use. But what if now I decide, you know, I got room for six of those?
You know, that's what I was saying the same...
Now, it's a matter of degree.
Right.
And it's like, I'm really going into business.
Right.
Because I'm gonna go way over the amount that I'm gonna use, and I know that.
Right.
And it's no longer an accessory use. Where do you get that, where does that transition occur?
Right, right.
And I'm saying something like, and I'm just throwing this out, something like two times what my house uses.
But when we get into something like that, I, I don't think it's enforceable. I mean, who...
Well, I'm just saying, and I'm trying to figure out where to draw the line.
That's why I'm saying the size of the field, because that's the visual impact. I mean, we're, you know, we're thinking about...
Technology's gonna change.
Right.
Yeah, but we're dealing with, we're dealing with how the technology is now.
Right.
Also. So I guess the question, yeah, so that's, that's where we're, that's the first thing we have to work through, is the distinction between what, what we define as an accessory use and, and a primary use, or a non-accessory use, and however the other basket.
Can I ask a question, Sean? Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter if you have a house and you have a solar farm that is attached to that house, that, you know, is an accessory, you know, they're selling more power, then what's the harm in that? If you have a lot that has no other use on it, other than solar, then that would be the primary use. But, you know, you're, you're trying to promote the production of solar energy. Right, so what is the, the harm in...
Well, let's go...
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm asking the question too. Let's go through, let's try to think of examples.
But are we, are we trying to regulate the accessory use differently than regulating the commercial use?
Yeah.
Right, so then, then we need to define what makes an accessory use.
Because, I mean, not, to my mind, yes, but, I mean, this is the whole board's, to my mind, if we, if we say essentially that, that commercial use for solar is unregulated, so that anybody can do anything anywhere?
Well, it's not, it's, it's not allowed now, is it? If Tim wanted to put a solar farm in place?
No, it would not be allowed because it would, well...
If Tim wanted...
If Tim wanted to do it on his property, on his house...
Okay, on a vacant lot?
On a vacant lot, then no, because it would become the primary use, and it's, and I shouldn't say no, it's a, it would be no in most of the districts, because you're not allowed to do it commercially.
I think you're conflating two different things. We're, we're talking about, we were talking about keeping things the way they are generally and, and possibly even adding possibilities with the, you know, the structural definition approach. So that's one thing, that was just that. But then we're, we're doing something different, which is differentiating between accessory use and let's just say, non-accessory use. And if I heard correctly, it seemed to be the suggestion that the non-accessory use could potentially be unregulated, which I don't think that's...
I was asking David now if it was regulated, and David's saying that in most districts it is regulated.
Now, but...
As it's not permitted.
But, but we're not talking about now, we're talking about in the future, so...
We may want, we may, we may want to permit it in the future.
We want to, may we...
We may want to permit it in the future.
I think that's what we're exploring, yeah. But the question is how we're gonna do that.
So, let's, you know, take a step back and look at what's currently allowed in the zoning ordinance. And so we say rural district, no. There's, you can't have solar as a primary use on a property because it's commercial, if you're just selling it. So let's say we change table four one and add solar as a allowed use in all districts, just to make life simple.
Wait, wait a second, solar as an allowed use?
Primary use.
Primary use.
Primary use. So that means anybody can do anything with solar anywhere?
No, they, they can do solar, but you're still going to run into the dimensional controls. And so, your, your lot coverage is gonna max out at twenty-six thousand square feet.
So if somebody has, has whatever, a hundred acres? No, say without a house, just a hundred acres, and they wanna put a solar farm on it, what can, what can they do?
They can build up to twenty-six thousand square feet of solar.
Twenty-six thousand feet?
Yep.
So is that, is, and say that's agricultural soil?
Oh, again, that's a question for the board to discuss, but I'm saying...
Well, that's what I'm doing, that's what I'm doing, I'm discussing it. So I, I think this is, these are where the difficult issues start to come up. You know, from my, my point of view, that there are two major and three significant issues, all supported by the major, by the master plan. In the natural resources section and in other places, biodiversity is, is a recommendation and is supported. And to my mind, biodiversity is crucial, because without the biodiversity, you could cover the planet in solar panels, and nobody would, would be alive. So, you know, I, I think we need to honor what, what the master plan says about biodiversity and to honor what it says about, or what it, I, I assume it's gonna say about energy and solar. And then there's also agricultural soil. And I think, to my mind, the challenge is going to be to have those, those three aspects work together in a way that, that benefits the town and benefits the environment, which is really what we're after here.
But John, I still think, I mean, assuming everybody's in favor of solar, which I think probably everybody is...
Well, you say everybody, you mean on the board or in the town?
Well, Jeff, I mean, the town.
I think the, the town voted for it overwhelmingly. I don't think there's anybody on this board who's against solar.
Exactly. But the only pushback you're gonna get, the only negative thing is when somebody tries to build something right in front of somebody's property. So I assume, it sounds like we're saying we won't have any control over that. So the only recourse somebody would have would be to...
We're not saying anything yet, we're discussing it.
Okay, so if we don't have any recourse over, you know, if the neighbor doesn't have any recourse, then the only option they have is to go to court, and people with a lot of money will do that, or they'll end up being hate your neighbor for the rest of your... So I'm just saying, is there any reason that we need, or any way that we can try to help that situation? I don't know, maybe there is.
Well, I think, again, going back to what is already in existence in the ordinance.
Right.
If you protect your setbacks, protect your heights.
Right.
Protect the amount of coverage on a lot.
Right.
Which, again, is already written into the ordinance. You're, you're still going to protect your neighbor's rights to that much extent. I mean, you, you can't, the landowner also has rights.
Right.
And so, yeah, it's a balance. The, those items in the zoning already have been proven to work, and proven that, that people could live with them.
Which, which is why, really why I think it's a good idea to, to stick with what works, and if we want to expand on it, fine.
I, I really like the idea of actually defining stuff and having definitions for it first, and then working out the details. You know, you talked about agricultural soils. Any type of development on agricultural soils, if there's insufficient agriculture, or insufficient areas outside of agricultural soils on the lot for development, you are able to develop up to twenty-five percent with an ease input on the remainder twenty-five.
But that's up to twenty-five percent.
That's up to twenty-five.
It's often, often discussed as, and, and this, these sorts of things are gonna be issues, because it's discretionary. I mean, I think historically, in most cases, the board has said twenty-five percent, or the zoning board.
Well, I think that the question is that applicants come in and say, I want the twenty-five percent, and that's what they present a plan.
Right.
And there's no reason for the board to deny, as long as the plan is reasonable. The only time...
Well, it's a special exception. And the reason to, that, that it could be denied would be because it doesn't meet the criteria of a special exception.
There have been, you know, applications for agricultural soils that have been denied. They wanted to move a house from near the road to the middle of the road, to the middle of the field.
In the context of, of solar.
But I, but I think solar panels maybe are treated, should be treated a little differently than buildings, because if the agricultural soil ever gets to the point where it's more valuable as agricultural soil, which I think it may in the next fifty years, then the solar panels can be removed fairly easily, even concrete facing. So it's a little different than a building, which is a lot more difficult to move. So we might want to think about that, you know, as...
So, so you'd be less concerned because of...
I'd be less concerned because they could be removed and they could go back to agricultural soil.
Yeah, solar, solar farms don't generally disturb the soil that much.
Right, and if, and if I said, if the soil gets to be more valuable at the farm, you know, we really need it, because the whole west is gone, and there's no water out there, and we need all of it, then, then it could be put back, because I could go for the soil.
So what about situations like in, with small lots, where, like in town, where, you know, people are living close together? Is there, is there any concern about that?
So is that a lot coverage issue, or is that...
That would be a lot coverage issue.
Or a setback issue?
I think you, those are two. And, and again, I'm, I'm going to keep harping on this. I would like to have a definition telling me how to calculate this, because...
Well, you, you mean, you mean the coverage?
The coverage.
Well, you, you said last time that the way it's being done is, is quite arbitrary.
But, I still want that down on paper.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say, okay, let's...
We can, we can write that off, that's fine.
Let's stick with that.
Do we, do we want to relax that at all for solar, solar intrusions?
I don't know.
I would make a suggestion that you, you might want to. And the reason being is there are...
You're saying this could all be, well, let's, let's stick with it.
If you are, have a small lot and you put in a single tractor and you count that entire surface, that's a fairly large area. If you're in the line common or line center district, your special exceptions allow up to five hundred square feet of intrusion. And once you've used that up, you're done.
Intrusion?
Or additional, additional lot coverage.
Additional, what do you mean additional?
Under the special exception, currently, if you wanna build a building, you're allowed in those districts five hundred thousand and the other...
Okay.
And I'm not sure that the, you know, a fixed solar panel that doesn't track, you know, that's going to shed water into a specific area and, and could cause runoff. The, the tractors during rain tend to move perfectly vertical, so that they don't collect water. So there may be a difference you wanna look at for the tractors, because they, they are not always in the same orientation. They're not always horizontal or vertical, they, they change.
Right.
So one of the things that I did in the, in the second page of this is some practical characteristics of solar panels that, like, what, what's up? I mean, I'm most concerned about residential solar, which we, we're stuck on, on, on solar panels that individual people can put up on their homes. And the, the, it's all arranged today to put in six and seven kilowatt arrays, but they're ground mounted, they're about three hundred fifty square feet, and between seven and nine feet tall. So that's, just to sort of give a scale. Revision Energy is installing many arrays that are as much as twice as big. And so the, people that have heat pumps, they have electric vehicles and all, and they just use a lot of, a lot of power. And so those are gonna be bigger, bigger arrays on my...
So, wait a second, so the bigger arrays would be the seven to a thousand?
Seven hundred, ten thousand, yeah.
Okay.
And those are, and, and so the, the gist of my request or my thought here is if a homeowner wanted to put this on their home and, and do this, sure, roof mounted if you can, but the ordinance should find a way, given the urgency for this, the ordinance should find a way to permit them in most circumstances. Obviously, if you've gotta quarter acre a lot...
So, wait, when you say permit them, what are you talking about?
Seven hundred to a thousand, pretty good.
Permit a homeowner to have enough power generation to serve my standards, a hundred percent of their needs.
So, okay, let's back, let's just stop there for a second. So that's not, I, I don't see that that's a way to define it, because you're, you're gonna have to present that what the homeowner's gonna say, I should have this.
Here's my electric bill.
Here's my electric bill.
No, but, I mean, we're gonna know. I mean, Revision Energy is gonna have good rules of thumb for this. And if somebody comes and says, I wanna get a ten kilowatt array or a fifteen kilowatt array, we can say, fine. That, I, I, I mean, I don't wanna make this hard for somebody, because if they wanna generate enough power for their house, we shouldn't, we make, we shouldn't be brutal as you...
I don't think anybody wants to make it hard. We, we wanna be responsible. So, so is there any, I mean, is, is there an instance where somebody could come in and say, well, I want this and it's excessive?
What would it mean to be excessive?
Yeah, what would it mean to be excessive?
I don't know, I don't know.
But I think, I think it's, it's wonderful to say, I mean, these are very wonderful objectives, but we don't live in a world where we can, we own, especially in this role, where we can just say, you know, give everybody, you know, if, if, if our, if people came here to get candy, we'd be very popular. The reason people hate us, because, you know, we...
By definition, we must say no sometimes.
Well, we, we need to, to make difficult decisions. So I, I would, we, when we go through this process, all of us, including you, need to think about, we need, we need to look at the flip side. It's, it is our role to do so. Doesn't mean that, you know, we have to be mean or, 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 but we, we are responsible for looking for the flip side. And, and in this instance, I think, you know, we, what you just said, we need to look at, well, what would be excessive? That's a good way of approaching it.
How would we, how did we figure out?
Well, go ahead.
Well, for me, I've got a really small house and I'd really like a shed. So I don't really feel like I should not be able to have a shed where my neighbor might have the same lot coverage constraints or, you know, and then they would get solar, but I couldn't have a shed. So I really like following the standards that we have for structures, because it's kinda fair, whether you wanna put in solar or put in a shed or garage or addition on the house. But that's, that's kinda where I am.
I think your neighbor went through this a while back. He wanted to put solar trackers, several of them, on his property. He had his relatively small lot right on the river. He had, has quite a few buildings on the lot, and he exceeded all the allowances under the zoning. And so when he applied for it, the zoning board said no. He had asked for variance to put in the solar trackers. And they said, you've already used up all your area, there, there's no legitimate reason. You do have a lot of roof space, you can put them on the roof. And that's what he ended up doing. Wasn't, and, and that's where, you know, you get the, the solar companies, and I, I talk to Revision all the time.
Yep.
And they will tell you, this is the best place for solar. And they don't look at it as, you know, from a zoning point of view and say, okay, this may be the best place for the solar, but if we put it on the roof, you know, and expand the system some, we can get the same amount of energy. It'll cost more. And I think that's gonna be part of the balance, is that, you know, if you wanna produce enough energy to supply your house and you live on a small lot, you're going to have to give up some of the, a little more money, basically, to be able to put those panels on a roof instead of on the, on the ground. And that's where I think the board needs to kinda look at this and say, you know, there are some alternatives, if they're not the, the absolute best. But some people might wanna have a, a three-car garage, their lot is too small, so they have to settle for a two-car garage. It's the same...
So I, I, I wanna ask the question again. How, how will the board decide what's fair, reasonable, sensible?
Well, you being also part of, when you say the board, you are the board also.
Yeah.
So ask yourself.
Okay, I'm gonna say that this question should come front and center at the energy chapter hearing.
Well...
I think, I think the zoning amendments are different from those.
Yeah, they are different.
Well, but how are we going to decide what's fair? We, we, we'll, we'll break the rules to implement what's fair.
Right.
How are we gonna find out whether everybody in this line is thrilled, would be thrilled with the opportunity to have solar, or whether everybody in line would be backing away and saying...
Well, we're certainly gonna have feedback.
We know they're gonna be, we know they're thrilled because they've had positive feedback. Any amendment we do is gonna have its own hearing as well, so we're gonna get feedback.
But, but for us, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna break some set of rules to implement some notion of what we think the town wants.
Right.
What can we do to get feedback right now before we spend a whole lot of time?
What we already said many times, as I recall, is that what we hope to do after the energy chapter hearing, because the energy chapter hearing is about the energy chapter itself, is ask the people if they're willing to stay to get feedback.
I also think it's important to have...
Oh, there we go.
Glad I closed my windows.
Really, it's supposed to rain now?
There's some thunderstorms, little small ones rolling through.
Do they mind if I open the windows?
Sure. Do you want a big rock to carry it?
Oh, yeah.
Slide pole there.
Everybody's later?
Having some, you know, if you go to people and say, what, do you like solar? Do you think solar is a good thing? I don't think there's going to be anybody in town that's going to say no.
Nothing's gonna say no.
If you come to people and say, do you want solar panels right up to your property lot? Then they may say, well, I'm not quite so sure about that.
Or the sun reflects off of those and it comes right in my window and I can't watch TV.
Yeah, there goes some of the types of...
And so these are the questions to ask, I mean, everybody's in...
What I'm trying to say is it, it helps to have something in front of people to look at so that they can see some of the issues, not just, you know, say, what do you think about solar? You know, that's part of the problem with doing surveys. You know, surveys get written and, and are very generic questions. And everyone says, yeah, we're all for this. But when you start trying to get the details, then they're like, well, I'm for it, but... And so having...
You have to have a lot of examples, a lot of...
Having some...
Let, let David...
Here's another thought example, right to your point though. Is what if Ray came back in here and he said, you know, I was thinking about putting a couple more senior housing units down here, but I can't make the economics work out. But how about if I put in solar panels? And then you're gonna say, oh, you can't do that, that's not, we don't have an ordinance for that. And then he's gonna say, so solar energy's not as important to you guys as senior housing? Aren't they both pretty important? And now you're, now you're going, okay, what do we do? Why would we not allow that same area filled with solar panels as we would have allowed senior housing in this exact situation? That's a good way to think about what our priorities really are. And, and why do we go through all the gymnastics for senior housing, but would we be willing to do the same thing for solar? And if so, under what circumstances? Because I'm very sympathetic with Vicky's point of, yeah, but I can't put in a solar panel, or I can't put in a shed, but, but now you're gonna let him go back there and put in solar panels? So that's where the fairness and the, and the trade-offs and everything else starts to, start to...
And, and the part of the question is, there are, there are six line residents here.
Well, there are eight people on the board.
Right, but I mean, there, exactly, there's eight people on the board and there's seventeen hundred forty-five people in line. And we think a lot about these issues. Many of those people also think, also would think about them. And so how do we get their feedback? That's, that's the question.
So, and I'm asking you to answer it.
I think we have an all-court press to say, after the energy chapter hearing, we are gonna talk about what the rules should be. We have hears...
We're not gonna talk about what the rules should be, we're gonna ask for input and discuss it. So, and what, what do you mean by an all-court, define an all-court press?
I think a really well-knowned meeting that says, more than, more than simply the legal definition.
So, what?
Have the energy commit, committee send out flyers. David, I don't know, I, I could think of other things that you could send out.
Well, first off, I can't send out mail-in. And the reason for that is there's a cost and I don't have, you know, that. Those types of things have to be put in my budget.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, so...
So number one, it should be really well-knowned and beat the drums to get people to come and think about it.
So what is well-knowned?
But you asked me what I could do, so I think I have one other thing. We could work to pull together more specifics. This says a, a seven kilowatt ground mount array, sort of the same size as a garage. I mean, it's not, it's not as big as a McMansion and it's not as big as a VW.
A two-car garage, or...
Yeah, the, uh, two-car garage is like four hundred square feet and the seven kilowatts is about three hundred fifty square feet, so... So they're similar size, bigger, look different, they're different to our eyes. But to speak to the question, okay, I wanna put this right, you know, just up to my side setback. What does the town say? Does the town say, oh, no, no, wait a minute, no, that, if anyone could do that...
Back to what I'm trying to say, that let's have something prepared for, and I'm sorry, you know, we have two weeks.
Yeah, we're not gonna get it done.
You know, because people, I, I think, again, generalize, they're happy about something when you get into specifics, then they're going to be like, oh, wait a minute now, and you're getting to your point. How come they can do solar, I can't do a shed? Those are the types of things that I think need to be discussed. No, that's the type of input and not, do you like solar? I, yeah.
I totally agree.
And to, to that end, and to, I think, what this is, what I see this coming down to is, and let's just assume everybody is in favor of solar. You know, I don't think we're gonna have anybody coming in here and saying, you know, I, I will stand here with my last breath to defeat the soul. The, the question isn't whether we're gonna do something, I, I don't think there's anybody on here who, who is in favor of this. The, the question is gonna be the, the where, where the various lines are drawn. So what I would like to, to get feedback on from whoever's here is, let's, let's just put aside the, oh, anybody being against it. We're assuming we're all, everybody in this room is for solar. The issue facing the board is that there are many complex issues that we have to address. Some of them will be unforeseen. And, and the most difficult thing we have to do is that we want to make this as, as available as possible, but we wanna do it in a responsible way. And so, you know, somebody getting up and saying, I want solar and I, I, you know, this is, and I would agree. You know, this is a, an emergency climate thing and we need this and we need to get on this now. That doesn't, I mean, I think we all agree about that. But that doesn't help us with what we gotta do.
But I think, John, one way to do it would be, people at the meeting in public, you could say, okay, is there any instance where your neighbors were putting up solar that you wouldn't be happy? You know, you could say, think about that, you know, where you live. Is there any way or any instance where you would not like to see it?
Well, I think, I think that's one, that's a good, that's a good question. And, and then somebody can write this stuff down. So one question is, is there, is there any place...
Any instance?
Any instance, well, you're talking about neighbors, but I would, I would add beyond neighbors, is there, is there any, are there any places you don't wanna see solar in town?
Right.
Or, or any types of land, or, you know, that sort of thing?
Yeah, and a lot of people might say, well, you know, it's so important and it doesn't matter. Or other people might, yeah, right.
Right. So I think those are good questions.
Yeah.
And I can, I can email Jim Nurse and suggest that, that he send out a mailing. Does he have a budget?
Probably not. Right, right. I mean, it it would take.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
It it would take too long.
It would take too long.
To produce it, first off, we'd all have to get together and and figure out.
Well, we wouldn't, they would. No, 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 really, we wouldn't.
You're right, you're right.
But they're not, it's not gonna happen.
But they would have to get together, they'd have to have a meeting, blah, 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 and then sign on it.
Yeah, I I think I think we can encourage people to come and and ask them to stay afterwards and address it in this way. We're all in favor of it, where are the places that you're where you have problem?
I I don't disagree, getting public input is important, but just as we struggled here today, you just suddenly say, let's put a hundred people in a room and let's just discuss it and see what we get. We're not gonna get any more progress, we're gonna get less progress than we had today, trying to figure out different scenarios, trying to think about thought exercises, trying to figure out what some of the criteria are that we wanna. What people, so the general public is not very good at blue sky thinking. In fact, the general public is terrible at it, most humans are terrible at it. Some of us who've been doing this a lot get okay at it, but none of us are really great. What we do well is react to stuff. So if we if we, with some practice, just as we did with the senior housing amendment, which is very similar and very much analogous.
I agree.
That, okay, everybody wants housing for seniors, I mean, who's against housing for seniors? Nobody is, but we have to think through all kinds of scenarios of where people would try to abuse it, where where we would trade off one one thing for another, in in one social good for another. So, you know, wetlands versus senior housing, okay, we both want both, but sometimes we might have to make a decision. And the same thing might be the case with with solar, where you'd say, would you allow this in an area that, you know, encroaches on wetlands? Well, I mean.
But you're put, I think that's really well put, and and.
So we need to think it through.
And then going back to the senior housing, we did have a tremendous amount of of feedback. And of course, everybody was pretty much in favor of it, but we did get people who were concerned, is it gonna be too much traffic, is it gonna be this? But we did get, I mean, I I'd say that there were certain, there was certain feedback that really influenced.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was really well thought out. And and when I heard it, it was like, you know, that's a really good point. And I think that's that's what we we need to listen for in in terms of feedback, because there, it's true, we're gonna get a lot of generic stuff like, this is great, oh, I'm in favor of it, blah, blah, blah. But some people will go, you know, I I used to live in so and so and what they did there that worked really well was that. And and it's like, kinda like, oh, you know, that is really a good idea. So we can get some stuff that can that can really stick, you know, some spaghetti that sticks.
But a lot of that came after we went through, we had some specifics for them to react to. So the things like the twelve hundred square feet or the twenty thousand square feet, we thought about it long enough to come up with some numbers and some limits. And once we did that, we were able to throw that out and then people would go, wait a minute, where'd you get, where'd you come up with that, how'd you come up with that number?
Right, right.
And there was a lot of that discussion.
And we were challenged.
Right. So that's again what I'm what I'm thinking.
And I think to your concern, I think, you know, I think from now on until we we get some zoning amendments, this is what we're gonna be doing for the rest of the year. So we can invite people every, just like you were saying, that is what we did with the senior housing. We we came up with something, people came and and gave us feedback and we changed it. And we kept on whittling it down until we ended up with what we ended up with. And I think that that's a really good point you made.
So I think it would behoove all of us to think of things sort of like the exercise I just did here, is would we bend rules for that? Maybe, maybe not. Agriculture, I mean, there's a lot of ones that have been found around here, agriculture soils. Okay, is it really that critical to exclude agricultural soils? Or some fusion, I mean, if Bailey Farms suddenly wanted to put a thing on there and 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 it's, you see it driving into town, everybody would go, ah! But if it was hitting on a field back on River Road, maybe people wouldn't be quite as concerned, so.
Or maybe people would say, that is great.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't know.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know, and and so this is, this is.
But you gotta give them some 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 scenarios to respond to.
Yeah, we need, and and this is, I think, what we're gonna start to do, and and we don't need to think of the date of the energy chapter hearing as well, then that's the end of the. This is gonna be ongoing, just like the senior housing was. We're gonna have a million of these meetings and we're gonna encourage people to come to each one.
And you know, I think I think there are some good things in those three towns, we got to, I heard long ago what, I was reading to all those. There's some good things in there, you know, what the other towns have done. I mean, I think maybe we should all look at those again and.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
You know, they, some of them were more restrictive than others, I mean, once the town was really restricting it and they started with district and all that. Anyway, there's a lot of good talks.
Yeah.
Good thing we don't have a historical district.
Let's let's not, let's not go down that.
David's not a historian.
That old road. All right. Gosh, it's nine o'clock. You've all been marvelous, do we wanna?
John, could I say one thing about this new business? I would like, maybe what I should do is send you a proposal, John, to say, we should talk about whether we should ask the town for money to do various things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, I didn't know what you were talking about.
I'm sorry, yeah, so we, I will send you a note, list some of the things that occurred to me.
And we can talk about it next time.
Talk about it next time.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Send it to me and David.
Cause that'll prompt me to put it on the agenda, all right?
Yeah.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you.
What a group, man, I'm telling you. Just, just can't beat it. Now I gotta go back into the unconditioned, air conditioned world.
Yes.
Is it raining out there when you?
Uh, no, it already rained.